Good. All right, well, so we're a few minutes late. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everyone could please stand.
We'll pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the republic of America, which stands on the ancient, non-ergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight? If not, we will proceed to the first section of public comments. Bring up on the screen the public policy. Policy, public comment policy. So I see a few.
Public participation at board meetings.
I see a few people here tonight. It's a long policy. I think the most important part to remember is that we are, we do welcome comments certainly. Happy to see you here. But be careful. This is not forum to issue personal complaints against school personnel, right? We're definitely interested when you have to hear, but there is a separate process to follow the issue complaints against school personnel. So we need to follow that process, respect. Everyone's privacy as far as that's concerned. So that being said, are there any public comments this evening? Yep. Also, please state your name and town residence if you could. Thank you. Oh, you have a microphone over here. Whatever you feel more comfortable doing.
Hello, my name is Jordan Nagel from Jaffrey, New Hampshire. I'm currently a senior and I've been doing online school with the Cellus Academy for the past two years. I started homeschooling because I, it appeared to me that my entire family is being targeted and harassed by the current administration. I'm not a troublemaker by any means. And for the past two years, I've been a full-time student, worked full-time and played three varsity sports teams, all while maintaining a 3.75 GPA. Every day I wake up trying to be a better person today than I was yesterday. That being said, I am still only 18 years old and I mess up often, but I always try to learn from my mistakes. While I was at track, I was goofing off with my friends and we were trying to be funny. We greeted each other with a what's up my N-word and shook hands. When we use this word, we do not use it in any derogatory manner and never meant to offend anyone.
So, so Jordan, I know that we're kind of in, in the middle of a student and you've sent something similar, I think, to Mr. Dustin.
Because I find that anytime my family has a complaint, he will intervene and say that we can't file it. Like Jordan did reach out.
Well, we could do the non-public.
He reached out last week and that responds in a time-sensitive manner. And if we'd like to make this go into a private session, we're comfortable with that. But I feel he has a right to.
Yeah, I think if, if the conversation's going to continue in this manner, I think you'd leave it to the board and we could go to a non-public session if the board, because we can't, I think we can't talk about. No, I understand. Yep.
It doesn't mention anybody. He's comfortable with being public. But if you guys think that he'd rather hear it privately, he's comfortable doing that too, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think the couple of things, because it involves student personnel, like a student situation. And you know, matters of you know, record, whether student record or discipline record or something like that. It's not, it's not meant, but it's not, we're not, we're not going to be presenting that. If we allow, the school district allows that conversation, then we're allowing the dissemination of that. So the board can go into non-public to listen to. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
So, so I'll leave it to the the board and see if there's any motions to enter into non-public.
Okay, I'm like a motion to enter to non-public.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Charlie.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Christine.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Hi.
Sandy.
Hi.
Well, I myself. So.
Was it Lisa?
Lisa.
So we would go to.
Physically go to the other. Intercess, thank you.
Usually the library.
So it's the live stream is still on?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the public out there, we're, we'll go into non-public. So we'll take a short recess from the public session and we'll be back as soon as the board has heard the current statement from the public.
Yep. I'll make the motion to leave non-public. I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to leave non-public. Sandy.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
John. Charlie.
Aye.
And yourself and I. So we're back in public and still in public comments. Is there anybody else who has a public comment?
Myself, my name is Catherine.
Yep.
I actually live in Dublin, but I'm here to just take some notes from the Manaduck Ledger transfer. I did a little short course with about five or six other people sponsored by the Ledger transfer competing Sentinel last fall. We're called Civic Documenters. And we just kind of help out the reporters attending public meetings, select boards, school boards. And also I'm a trustee on the Dublin Public Council. What's going on?
Great, thanks.
Want to stretch to me, Joe, great.
Thanks for introducing yourself.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Yeah, I don't think, are you, you're not from the district or, right? I don't think that's really a public, public comment. Just introducing yourself out of courtesy, out of courtesy. I appreciate, not a problem. Now, is there anybody online wishing to make a public comment? Well, we'll give it a minute. Still not seeing anything? All right, well. Next up, we have Maddie Belafoto and the Student Representative Report. Hello, Maddie.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Glad to be here as usual. I have two things that I wanted to mention. I know one of them, I'm not sure how well we can make it happen, but Mr. Dustin recently sent out an email about graduation and how it's going to be inside the Pratt and our number of tickets and everything. So everything that we need for that. And I've, I think every senior that I've talked to has been upset about the fact that it's inside. I know a lot of people in my, my grade have really big families like myself. I have two stepkids, two parents, so that's already four tickets and we get seven tickets each. And there's certain family members that I really want to be there, but it's hard with the amount of tickets that we have now. And I know part of that is because it's inside the Pratt. I did go to the graduation indoors and I went to the one outdoors. I know we had a problem with microphones and other various like safety things that Mr. Dustin sent out. And we all like recognize that as a problem, but if there was anything that we can do, the seniors are willing to like volunteer and help set up graduation each day. If that, if that's what would help have graduation outdoors. My other thing, completely unrelated, but a lot of students have come to me asking to talk about the possibility of more AP classes in the future. I know we have different ones and various topics, but I think a subject that we're, we seem to be lacking, I know as my time in high school, is AP science classes. Just some ones that I thought about were AP Biology, AP Environmental Science. Like me, I took environmental science here at the high school, but I'm planning on going to college for environmental science. So I really wanted to broaden my education in that subject and it was really hard for me to do that because I couldn't take an extra class here. And I'm, I know a lot of people are also possibly interested and I think if we had more AP classes in different subjects, then I think a lot of people would be interested to try other subjects. And I know I like completely wasn't interested in environmental science before and then I took the class and now I'm going to college for it. So I think there's a possibility for that to happen for a lot of students and I think a lot of students strive to take AP classes. A lot of people that I know strive to take as many AP classes as they can and I was definitely doing that throughout my years of high school. I know we can take community colleges through online and that's something that I did for environmental science and I do highly recommend it. Especially since you straight away get your college credits. But I think it's a lot easier for people to learn in school and have hands-on labs, especially for science classes. And I think more AP science classes will like help benefit on the student education range on, on what kinds of topics that we can learn about.
Thanks, Maddie. Any questions or comments from the, the board? I guess on the first issue first, the graduation issue that you brought up.
Well, I guess practically speaking, not in terms of who made the decision and how they made it, but I don't know if you noticed, it's been, it's been really wet. Been like about 18 months. So, and you know, perhaps planning for it to be inside is, I don't know if that was a thought process, but in terms of my life and how many things get canceled or rearranged or postponed because of rain days, it's probably safe to have it inside. I wonder if there's a way to ask families if they have extra tickets and how to.
Yeah, I have, I personally, I don't know how, how it's been like for other people, but I have asked quite a few different people if they've had extra tickets. I've asked like my whole band class, like seniors in there, if they had any extra tickets and I've had no luck getting any extra ones. Okay.
But I wonder if there isn't, couldn't be a more formal, like Facebook kind of thing or something.
Is there, we used to go to Franklin Pierce. We're not doing that anymore. Graduation used to be at Franklin Pierce. Okay, I'm old school. What do you want me to say?
Hold on, graduate of Franklin Pierce while all the COVID. That was very recent. It's gone since I've been on the school board. It's gone back and forth between being on the lawn of the track, the soccer field and at in the Pratt.
Yeah, it's been a few years since FPU. There's certainly some reasons to move away from FPU. Most people actually wanted it back on campus in general. I think it's nicer to have it on campus. FPU is definitely an indoor venue as well, so it doesn't actually address the concern that you're bringing.
But more people could go.
Yeah, that is, that's, that's a major reason why people would prefer it outside because of the amount of tickets that we're getting this year. So if there's anything at all that we could do to raise the amount of tickets that students can get, I think it would be beneficial.
So I'd prefer the outside as well. But also you also want to consider RMS because the whole seating is more, there's more seating in RMS than there is at Pratt. I know people don't want to go to RMS because of the, it's the Pratt, but get the sign that says the Pratt and hang it in RMS. At least you get more seats.
How many more?
I don't know, quite a few more. The size of lechers.
Those are some good thoughts.
Any questions or comments from Maddie along the lines of AP courses here?
That is something that, that I am concerned about as well. It's having a young and a variety. And is there any way we can partner with other high schools? Because there is, I know that there is quotas that have to be met to hold the classes. Is there some way that we can partner with yeah, other schools? I know yeah, recently Manaduck and Hinsville decided to partner up and be able to do a hybrid where some things are labs in person at agreed upon times, but a majority is online with a virtual, live feature, so they don't have to be all in the same spot. So I would love to see if we could look at some creative options to partner with schools so that we can offer more. That, that is something really glad you brought up.
What about V-Lax? What do they have for AP classes? I guess that doesn't offer you the hands-on lab though.
Yeah, they have a lot. You know, they have a lot. It's it's not a hands-on program.
I did, I did look at V-Lax for environmental science on like a higher level and I don't think that they have it. Another problem with V-Lax is I'm not sure how AP and college credits work through there. I, I know how they work through like online community college classes, but AP, V-Lax, I'm not too familiar with, so I don't know how like easy that would be to transfer V-Lax credits to colleges.
Yes, John?
I'd just like to comment that I agree, the more AP classes would be ideal and I always hear that education is changing. We have to be more creative and I'm not sure what the best solutions are, but it occurred to me or I've heard discussions about V-Lax that if it wasn't just left to the student, if there was. if it wasn't just left to the student, if there was some kind of a mentoring arrangement where somebody could help students you know, maybe don't work as well in that online mode, or we need somebody to check in, I don't know if that would work, but but any strategy that would help us to often know AP would be great.
Yeah, I, I also agree, and I think it's interesting, given the, I, I think about this stuff in the context of like what we're talking about with the CTE Center, right? Where we're talking about, um, you know, technical education and trades. Which is great, and I think, you know, we're obviously moving forward with those things, but you know, another, certainly another target going forward is this, these AP classes, all of them, right? Will add value to our education here. And we do appreciate that input. I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to disagree with that, so maybe looking into, you know, those challenges that you talked about, Lisa, whether you need a certain amount of people and partnering, I think would be a good thing for us to do. Definitely. Any other comments or questions from Maddie? Maddie, thank you for, for being here as always. I appreciate your insights and your perspective, um, from the students. It definitely gives us things to consider, and you do a great job, you know, presenting it and giving us things to think about. And I think you weren't here last time, but I saw like up on the board, I think we're, I don't know how many, I think I saw double-digit colleges by your, uh, acceptance, so certainly congratulations on that.
I'm going to say Anson, I committed there, so.
That's great, congratulations. Very good. All right, if there's nothing else for the Student Representative Report, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, well, we'll start off with CTE, just a little bit of an update, so, uh, we've been able to start the conversation with the Commissioner, you know, I think by, at the last time we had, I believe we had had a conversation with the Commissioner and talking about what he was planning to put forth as a budget or a proposed budget. He actually doesn't make the final decision or anything like that. And he indicates that he certainly supports, uh, CTE and, uh, so CTE in the region, but also believes that, uh, there may be some financial constraints compared to what the schools convale, uh, Smasenek and Milford have kind of proposed. We proposed all collectively a fairly high number, so I know that tomorrow I'm meeting with at least two of those superintendents to discuss um, our conversation that we had with the Commissioner to be able to, um, determine internally how we might go uh, forward with our proposals. I would expect that in the near future, we'll probably be bringing back a committee that has already, or committees that have already had, uh, say in the CTE development. Uh, currently, we're talking about, uh, improving our construction trades program, adding a culinary arts program here, um, cosmetology and, um, the public safety and security. Strands, uh, but we, you know, also need to make sure that we are operating within a budget that is going to work both for the state and for our community. Uh, assuming of course, the state is able to, whatever they're able to put forward is going to pay seventy-five percent, which is what has customarily been, uh, spent by the state on CTE during, you know, at, at whatever school that has, uh, been able to be, be approved. Certainly, our goal after this conversation is to contact our, uh, architect and talk about what our next steps are, and then to be able to move forward and, uh, propose something that is going to be able to be, uh, to give us some firm numbers so that we can put something on the warrant or put a warrants um, on the warrant article, um, an article on the warrant, sorry, um, up for vote next March. So, we have a lot more work to do. We're still really in the early stages, even though we've had a lot of the, the early design and conceptual work done. Uh, it really needs to get much more into the nitty-gritty at this point in time. Partnerships is another item that we continuously have a conversation about, uh, partnerships with the community, partnerships with local colleges, with businesses. And so, uh, we just talked about possibly having partnerships for, to provide more, you know, course of, course at work perhaps in the future, uh, AP and so forth. So, uh, Franklin Pierce University, you've seen the paper, the partnership that, uh, has continued to bug beyond our, our base partnership of student teaching and, um, graduate interns. We were able to have that after-school programming work with the literacy groups over at RMS. You saw that in the paper that they went over to Franklin Pierce, recorded their stories that they had developed, and put them into the, um, into podcasts, and those podcasts have been distributed, I think, and we will be putting them out as well for others to be able to enjoy. Uh, this, that was RMS, so Ridge Memorial School, fourth and fifth graders who were involved in that. This week on Wednesday, there is a group of fourth and fifth grade learners from Jaffrey Grade School who are going to Franklin Pierce, and they're going to be presenting their research. So they have been involved in something called Inquiry Scholars, that is led by Dr. Tom Bennett from Franklin Pierce University in their Science Department. He and several of his students come over, they volunteer, they work with a group of fourth and fifth grade learners over at the Jaffrey Grade School, and they uh, work on researching whatever these, um, the students over at JGS are in, really interested in. And so there will be, um, around twenty displays, uh, they'll, they're put on those, um, poster boards with like, you know, those nice pictures and so forth, display boards, um, very similar to what, uh, a student from college would be using within like a hall, they go around and they talk about what their research is and so forth. Our fourth and fifth graders will be doing that exact same thing. And that showcase is this Wednesday, uh, I believe it's at one o'clock, I'm sorry, eleven o'clock. Um, over at Franklin Pierce University, parents, of course, will be invited. The boss is picking those kids up and bringing them over to the college, and it's nice, uh, you know, we, we were able to get our juniors here and other students here to be going over and experiencing some field trips over at Keene State College and maybe some other areas as well. It's nice that our early learners in the elementary are able to get on to a college campus as well, and I think that we're going to be able to do that more and more. Uh, as I meet with Franklin Pierce tomorrow to discuss other part, portions of our partnerships. We know that a lot more interest is coming in to partner with our schools from the colleges and some local areas. Another key partnership is our community, of course, and so that's both formal and informal. And formally, over the last couple of months, we've been working with the uh, Jaffrey, the town government in Jaffrey, along with the library, along with the recreation department, along with the Jaffrey Range Rotary, and, um, in a little bit, we're going to bring them in a little bit more. We've had some conversations with FPU as well to work together to be able to provide next year an after-school programming, or after, or after-school programming that would be located, um, at least the, the hub of it would be located at the Jaffrey Grade School, possible use of other areas in town as well. Um, so we are putting that together, getting, running some numbers, trying to figure out how we can make sure that that is done in a way that is cost-effective, that is, um, definitely providing the need that the community has and that parents have for their children. And that it is sustainable as well. Um, this would not be something that would be put extra within the school budget. It would be us working together to find out what already exists, how can we pull our resources? What type of tuition would we need to charge, things of that nature? Do we have volunteers from various, uh, groups? Like maybe Rotary or, uh, Franklin Pierce University, does Franklin Pierce have some work-study money that they could, you know, put toward some of the, the college students? Uh, we know that in the last successful after-school program that happened in this community, which was at the, um, Manaduck Camp down the road, uh, they were able to, uh, keep that going, um, with the use of volunteers from the college, so. We think that we are, uh, moving in the right direction. I'm excited to be able to tell you more once we learn more. Oh, one other thing, that, well, I mean, there's a lot of other things. One other thing that, um, I wanted to definitely mention was the play coming up, The Wizard of Oz. And I believe that Wizard of Oz is, um, this weekend, uh, Friday and Saturday. Is it Sunday as well? I think it's Friday, Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
It's right up there. It's the tenth and the eleventh, seven PM. And again, our elementary learners from both Jaffrey Grade School and Ridge Memorial School are all coming here to see the play on Thursday, and so, um, very exciting to have everyone, this entire district all in one place celebrating the arts like that. And a really neat, I think, uh, story that has meant a lot to many of our lives growing up.
Some of the elementary school students are in the play too.
There are some elementary students in the play as well, yes.
Anything else or any, any questions for Ruben on any of those topics?
Cause I just, as when you mentioned the Jaffrey students going Wednesday, tomorrow Wednesday for the research display.
That is, let me just give you the correct information. Why don't I get the correct information for you and I'll get it back to you.
Yeah, I'll just.
Inquiry scholar.
You have inquiry scholar, so inquiry like, you know, asking questions and so forth, scholars.
I'm just guessing the paper might, might send a real report.
Yeah, and I'll just comment a bit more on the, the CTE, um. I've been able to sit down on a few of those meetings and a few of the discussions, and it really does, I, and I'll, I'll say this for the sake of the board, um. You know, where it looks like the state is indicating to us that the, the total package submitted might be a little high, right? I don't think they're saying no, but they're, to me, uh, doing us the courtesy of letting us know that it might be at risk in the current form, so what that means for us, I think, is you know, discussions and I know we're still early in the process, but there'll be important decisions to be made on, you know, what, what are the priorities for us? You know, we may choose to go forward within the current form, um, it may be advisable to have a backup plan or a backup to a backup plan. So that we do get something approved in the end. I think the real shame would be is if we go through this whole process and end up with, with nothing, so I think there's more discussions to be had there, but for, for board input, I think, and there'll be input from certainly more than the board, I think those are the important things to be thinking about as far as when we talk about those programs, what is what are our priorities together? That's all I wanted to say about that. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Just want to say, yeah, thank you for those additional comments and Ruben for your update on it. And, uh, I, I think it's still, uh, probably a good idea to look at trying to get the support and involvement of our Democratic and Republican legislators who, you know, can certainly help in that. And I wanted to mention that the seventy-five percent funding, I think is pretty important. I, I worked with a program for a number of years with the USDA, and they did offer also seventy-five percent grants. However, when money was short, a lot of times they offered.
Fifty percent, yeah, yeah.
And the problem with fifty percent is I think that would make it very hard for our communities. So I, I think we'd be better off with a seventy-five percent grant, even if it's a smaller package. And anyway, it's one of the items of curiosity. Curious as to whether seventy-five percent is what has been obtained by some of the other districts that you know have made improvements.
Yep, that is what we, we're told.
Um, the inquiry scholars on our, from our live calendar is ten thirty to one o'clock on Wednesday, the.
Any other questions, comments for Ruben? Or Ruben, do you have anything further?
Uh, just that the session itself, because that's the total trip time, um, eleven o'clock is the start of that session.
I, I am glad to see the inquiry scholar program back. Um, I remember when my older daughters participated, I remember the questions that they researched, and I learned a great deal. So you think about someone in the fourth grade pursuing a, a scientific question in depth. Pretty amazing, and they, they still have their posters, so it's a very full program. Thrilled that it's back.
Anything else before I move on to the next item in the agenda? So, uh, next up is the consent agenda.
I would like to have the, the best way facility fees.
Any other changes to the consent agenda? Would anybody like to make a motion, uh, for the consent agenda?
Um, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Excellent, thank you, Christine. Thank you, John. Any discussion, uh, regarding tonight's consent agenda?
Could I just ask, what, what was the item that was moved?
It, it was the, to waive the facility fees.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So the question I have, just curious about what the, uh, GOs are.
Sure, GOs as we go forward and, uh, went with Witten Wisdom. So we went with Wit, Witten Wisdom, which, uh, is accompanied by some materials called GOs for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. So it's all part of, uh, those kind of the total package, the, all the, the strands of that rope that we talked about, but, uh, it's, it's for early literacy. Oh, come on. There's, especially early on, there's three portions of this, so you have Witten Wisdom, which spans from K kindergarten, um, all the way through grade eight. There's GOs, which is our other materials books. Uh, as part of, you know, that we would be able to use for kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And then there's, uh, very specific phonics work through foundations. Um, and also integrity, and integrity can be started in pre-K. So we have a pre-K through eight literacy process, um, that will be worked on for the rest of this year, as well as starting really in full force at the beginning of next year. Our administrators at all the schools will be trained in with Witten Wisdom. Um, the, called LEAD, L-E-A-D, meaning, uh, information that they need to have prior to starting the summer for game planning. And then, um, that will happen on the twenty-fourth of, of June. And then on August, I think it's twenty eighth, it could be the twenty-sixth, it's whatever the, the Monday is of August, I think it's twenty-sixth next week, actually, um, that will be the kickoff for all of the, uh, professionals, the paraprofessionals and the teachers who are going to be, um, using Witten Wisdom next year. For the first year.
Yeah, excellent, yeah, thank you. Thanks for that question, John. I was picturing like a really big rock with like gems inside.
Well, you know, I, I so good, sure, geology.
Yeah.
But I think that's the picture you're supposed to.
Glad you had.
Yeah, then that literature, those books, those exploration books, I guess.
Any other questions or, uh, discussion regarding, uh, tonight's consent agenda as amended?
Just one more little piece of information that might be of interest to you relative to GOs is that forty thousand plus dollars of those materials are being purchased through, uh, the early childhood grant. So this is just for second grade.
And I guess is, to kind of continue on there, I know we had determined that a certain amount of money we spent this year, and this is part, this is part of that, is, is we're proceeding for that literacy program, great. All right, see, there's a couple of field trips, a lot of nominations, um, but if there are no further questions, I'll ask for a vote, so all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda as amended, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, abstentions, so that passes by a vote of six to zero to zero. Abstentions. So that passes by a vote of six to zero to zero. So the one item that we did not address was the request to waive facilities fees.
So I wanted to take that out, but again.
Yep.
So this program, um, is not run by the Ringe Rec Department. We have approved the waiver for this program previously. It is, uh, they're, this is asking for one week. It is, if you go to the Ringe Rec site, it is a multi-week program. So I'm not sure. Yeah, the last time that I saw that we had approved a waiver for it was back in March to go through May. On the website, there is, um, their weeks starch in June. This is asking for a July week. Um, it is a hundred dollars per child that they're asking for, for, uh, three and a half hour program, Monday through Fridays. Um, so this is a for-profit-ish program, and we've had this discussion before. Again, it's not run by the Ringe Rec Department. It's run by Pure Shot Basketball. So again, I'm just making sure we're all knowing what we're saying that we're waiving. Like this is part of, you know, what we had talked about. Um, you know, again, this says for one week. I'm not sure why it's not saying the other weeks that they have listed on the website. On our Ringe Rec website. Uh, so I I just had that hesitation. Yeah, let me just take a look at the, you know, the Pure Shot Basketball Week says it's happening in the Ringe Rec Department. The dates they have listed online for their summer is, um, again, Monday through Friday, grades five through nine. This is from the ringerectdesks.com community program website. They have dates June twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth, July fifteenth and nineteenth, July twenty-ninth through August second. I, I'm not sure what we're seeing yesterday.
Can I ask a question? Does it say that all, for every location, it's at RMS or?
There's a question. This is from the Ringe site. So let me just take a look real quick. Yes, Ringe Memorial School Gym. Is listed for all of those. I'll, I'll keep looking, make sure. Oh, no, Franklin Pierce Fieldhouse, that the June one is Ringe Memorial School Gym. The July fifteenth to nineteenth says Franklin Pierce Fieldhouse. That's week two. Uh, week three is Memorial School Gym. I didn't see that we had already approved the June one. I didn't see that in our emails.
We, we have a lot of Saturdays.
Maybe they're paying for it. And this is just for the waiver. So maybe they are paying for it. Um, so I guess I'm just want to make sure that the intention of what we, before waivers is actually being honored and recognized. So.
So where do we stand on the MOU?
Yeah, I have not developed it yet. I have met with them. This is the one thing that we talked about that, well, this is the one concept, this and things like, you know, karate and so forth, that we would, um, need to talk more about. But I have not, uh, had the opportunity to finalize that. The one thing with regard to this um, in the June, because I haven't seen the June one either, the, the June request, if, if there is a June request, you said, like, you said you didn't see that. Right, right. I haven't either. So it would be, it may be good to table this and get more information about this and if there's another week as well, since that's being advertised on their, their site. And if it's, for instance, what you may have, what you suggested possibly being the case that one of these we'd like to pay for, the other one, we'd like to have, you know, that's an interesting, you know, approach.
Right. We've had a lot of conversation about, um, private groups getting paid through
Yes.
free waivers, you know, and we want the rec department to use our facilities. We want our towns using that. We just talked about the after-school program. You know, we, we don't have, the school itself doesn't have as many programs as our community needs. The rec departments are invaluable.
Yep.
It's really important that we protect our facilities and that we fund them. So, you know, that's, um, when we have that conversation, I just want to make, just let me just look at this real quick. Um, I just, they have other things on their website. I was just checking to see if it was happening. I don't see if it's happening on our property or not. Okay. It would just be probably good to have a conversation with both tabs, rec departments to just make sure what's happening on our property is visible. Now it's a new season.
I think that was the intent of the MOUs, and I think that if we ever get one of those things done, all right, we won't have to be worrying about these things. We'll have it codified and aware of everything that's happening. I was thinking if we could clone Ruben, we could.
That might be one of the scholarly questions, not about cloning me per se.
Feels like if we get a memorandum of understanding done once, it'll be the model and we'll be able to just replicate it the year after year, you know, with some adjustments, but that, that first one.
Yeah. So does anyone want to make a motion for the, the item that's being presented right now for this one week?
I'll make a motion to table, are you saying? Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this until future. You know, table the waiver, waiver until we get more information.
Sir, a second? John, seconds. Uh, any further discussion? All right, so the motion, the motion is to table this item, uh, pending further information about the other weeks, and we'll address it at the next meeting, assuming we get the information. Uh, all those in favor of tabling this motion, please indicate by saying aye. All those.
I need to abstain.
Okay. Um, opposed and one abstention. So that's five to zero to one. We'll table that, uh, until the next meeting, pending additional information about the other week.
I think, Chris, that we probably need to clarify. I know when this program is run through the Jaffrey Rec Department, that he is employed by the rec department. So it is a rec department program that pays his salary to run this program.
Okay. Sounds like some clarification needed and hopefully we can address that promptly at the next meeting. Next item on the agenda. Give me a second here. All right, meeting minutes. For approval, we have the meeting minutes from the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. School board meeting. Do I have a motion for, for these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteenth to twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Christine. Do I have a second? Thank you, Lisa. Any discussion about the meetings from, the meeting minutes from April fifteenth? If not, we'll vote on the matter. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions. So that's six, zero, zero. Those meeting minutes are approved. Back. Okay. Now we're here at, at item number nine, policy. We have policy B E A, first reading. Lisa, this one's, I think, came to us through through, no, no. Well, through me. Yeah, it was part of the process, right? Part of a lot of this process.
We actually recently, you know, looked at this, even though it says two thousand sixteen. So one of the things I'd like is to have the date updated. Um, but the reason this came to us without the policy committee is, um, it was noted that it still said that the meetings would be at seven P M., although we did vote to start our meetings regularly at six thirty. Even though this policy says unless that it'll be here, unless or it'll be at seven P M., unless the board says differently, um, we thought it would be best to simply write six thirty. So what I'm asking the board is to simply approve tonight, ignore the first reading. We had already approved the six thirties. This is simply a um, text change to six thirty instead of seven P M. No other changes other than updating the date from May second, two thousand sixteen to current. So I did not feel, felt the need to wait until our next board meeting, since we had already approved it. This is just a text change.
Any questions or comments for Lisa? I guess one thing, I know intermittently, right, we've moved, uh, when we've had, maybe anticipated a longer non-public session, we've started the meetings at seven, right? We've moved them back and I just wanted to, I'm, I'm totally fine with doing this, but I guess going forward, does this allow for that or?
It says, we can change it anytime we want. We don't have specific reasons. We can do whatever we want. But yeah, it says seven P M. So if somebody was looking at it, they would expect seven P M. So let's change it to the time that we vote on.
Makes sense to me.
So I will make a motion to amend policy V E A to change the, uh, first paragraph to say, instead of beginning seven P M., beginning six thirty again.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, any further discussion? Yes, John?
So I like the idea of making that change so that we don't confuse people, you know, but since we have gone back and forth a few times and they need that, can we put some language in there that says that, you know?
The very first two words are unless, or three words, unless otherwise altered by the board. So I think our language is right there. Which is why we probably didn't bother changing it before, because the language is there. And I like that the language is first. I don't usually start a sentence or a whole thing with the word unless, but I thought that was appropriate.
And I think part of the discussion around making it six thirty whenever possible anyway, was, and you're right, we have changed it on a, on a couple of occasions, was that some of our meetings were long and they will be long. And so even a half an hour, especially like, for instance, we're here in this building. We know that the, uh, Cassolio, the evening Cassolio crew gets out at around ten, so they're going to want to have things wrapped up around nine thirty. So we've averaged it sometimes, uh, at some points in the year around three hours. And so we, uh, we're cutting it close. And so that six thirty brought us to a more reasonable time for here.
All right. Any further questions? Let's take a vote. So all those in favor of approving policy B E A, changing the time to seven, six thirty P M., uh, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Give Lisa. Whoever, I think it was Justina that brought that, that, our attention. Thank you, Justina. Heading to the next agenda item, board committee updates. Let's, I guess, go down the table and start with. No, go ahead.
Policy is meeting tomorrow. Four thirty in the superintendent's conference room.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody else have any updates? Charlie?
The, uh, finance committee met. And, uh, one of the things on the agenda is a financial update. Board hadn't had one in a while, and so Kerry's here to help us there. Uh, we talked about the meeting schedule and trying to adjust it to the new membership. Um, basically it's going to stay the same. Uh, we talked a lot about the dashboard and what are the items that should be going into the dashboard. And, uh, we had a good discussion on that, but we just started a whole list of things. And we need to do more focus on other financial items that we would expect to see on a regular basis. And, uh, we discussed the possibility of accessing any surveys available from the admin group, food service, because we didn't know whether contract required surveying students or not. And so we're going to ask Kerry that tonight. So that's where we stand. And thank you, Lisa, for the minutes.
Facilities has not met since our last meeting.
Any other meetings since the last meeting?
This Thursday, this Thursday is the education committee.
Yep.
Um, elementary schools will be presenting.
So excited.
What time is that?
Four. Four thirty, yeah.
Hey, um, there are no more board committee updates. We'll get into discussion items. Two items on here, end of year, two related items, end of year finances. So this I'll hand it to either you, Ruben, or you, Kerry, to provide this update.
Sure. I will click on this. Then I will ask if Kerry would speak to this, and I'll try to highlight anything that she is saying to large this, uh, at various spots so that everyone can read it.
Okay. I believe most of you are.
I believe most everyone up there is familiar with this financial report because it's been historically provided in years past. Um, basically, when you're looking at this, the departments on the lefty side are broken out. It's pretty self-explanatory. And then it's looking at what we had last year versus this year. And this year, the data in the blue columns is, is, um, referencing this year. So the first budget column is what the actual approved budget is, and then the next column is the adjusted budget. And that's has to do with budget transfers. It also has to do with unassigned fund balance, retention money that the board approved in addition to any purchase order encumbrances that were carried over from last fiscal year.
Do you want us to just kind of zero in on the blue items? Is, would that be best for them?
Yes. So if you look at the total adjusted budget versus the approved budget, there's a difference of three hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars of that amount. Three hundred twenty-six thousand. Sorry, I'm trying to do broken screen here. Hundred fifty-five dollars was the unassigned fund balance. Money that the board approved expenditures of, and the remaining eleven thousand, seven hundred is prior year purchase orders that were carried forward. So when you're looking at the difference, that's where the amounts come from. Um, and then the encumbrances, we have a total of six million, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-three encumbrances that are in the system, which include salaries and benefits yet to be paid, along with any open purchase orders. And that gives you the total of twenty-eight million, five hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars of actual expenditures plus encumbrances that we expect through the end of this fiscal year, leaving an unspent balance of approximately Leaving an unspent balance of approximately one point three million, close to one point four million. However, there are some expenditures that. Will be coming forward that we don't have figures for student services is in the process of. Handling some situations right now where we don't know what the expenditures are. That's, you know, we're looking at a month's worth, I believe, of expenditures. So I don't anticipate it would be. Too excessive. We also have substitutes that don't get encumbered. That. Probably run around twenty to twenty five thousand for the remainder of the year. And. Food service, if we have a program loss, I did. Put some money in here for encumbrances for that, but the general fund has to cover. Food service, what you're looking at up here is just the general fund. It does not include grants or food service. And the general fund has to cover any program losses to the food service program. Now I. Going to be asking the Abbey Group to come and talk to you and present their financials for their budget for next fiscal year because we have to, the board will have to approve their contract. And that right now they're running at about a break even, but the food service program. Has a loss to it because not all of their expenditures are accounted for in the program. We have repair and maintenance. We have. Equipment purchases and other items that don't come under their budget. So I just want to make sure that everybody keeps that in mind. So typically, the board likes to know where a lot of the money is. Coming from that we have leftover. When you're looking at that, about half of it is in salaries and benefits of that one point. Three seven two million, about half of it is. Salaries and benefits that haven't been spent, and that's largely due to. Unfilled positions, staff turnover. Typically, things of that nature when we hire. You know, changes in salaries and benefits versus when we budgeted since we have to budget so far in advance. And then we're also looking at student services expenditures. For tuition and third-party services that haven't been fully spent either. For the schools, it's about the same. A lot of the two hundred fifty three thousand that's unspent is in salaries and benefits. About a hundred ninety thousand is in salaries and benefits. So I don't know if you want me to continue to go into any more detail or if anyone has questions, if they've looked at this and go ahead.
My question is, so earlier this year, and I think. This talks about it. I see the three thirty seven eight fifty five there. And earlier this year, we took from the. Unassigned fund balance. And this number right here, one million, three seventy two, six oh one. Does that? Already? Taken into consideration, putting that those funds back into the unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance or no?
No, that includes. The board approved unassigned fund balance. Amounts that we used for those expenditures. So what I would ask the board tonight is if they want to reverse that. Approval to have that money come out of the unassigned fund balance and allow me to do a budget transfer. I could do it out of salary and benefit lines that have money remaining and just have it come out of the general fund and not the unassigned fund balance, which would reduce that amount. By three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Because it's really unnecessary at this point.
So I would like to make a motion to do that. Because one of the things we did when we talked to the taxpayers. At the deliberative session and at the public hearing. Was that it was a cash flow issue and we were taking the money out of the unassigned fund that we would be putting back into the unassigned fund. So I think I made a commitment that we would do that. So I would make a motion to. Take. Three hundred. Was it three twenty eight?
Twenty six, yeah.
Three twenty eight, one fifty five.
Three twenty six, three twenty six, one fifty five.
Sorry, small print. And take it out of the general fund and put it back into the unassigned fund.
Okay, can the board also authorize me to do a budget transfer for those amounts?
And to authorize a budget transfer.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Charlie. John's going to second. Any further discussion on the matter? Questions? If not, we'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor of Charlie's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Extentions? All right. So that passes. Six to zero to zero.
A huge chunk of this is in. Special education.
Yeah, half of it. It's also a big part of the budget too. Talk about revenue next.
Yes, we can talk about revenue. So Ruben, do you want to pull up the revenue report? Please.
So no other questions on this right here? And just for clarification, we did not this year have any articles on the warrant that. withdrew money from this if we had any leftover, right? We raise inappropriate for like the special student services trust fund.
Next year, everything was raised and appropriate. There wasn't anything retained from. From any leftover.
I just asked a quick question. Were any of the items that. Were that money was retained for, were they purchased? Did we get the tractor? Did we get the Chromebooks?
They were purchased, yes.
Yes, we got a great deal on the Chromebooks. Actually got like sixty more as a result because we hit it just at the right time. So it was really good. And that's actually helped our second grade classes with their games web testing this year, which was, which was fantastic. So thank you for acting so swiftly on that. And a tractor and everything has come in and we have that as well. Yep.
Yeah.
And I'm still working on the literacy materials, but they should be coming in very shortly.
And Sandy, just. So I asked this question, you know, I think I know the answer. I believe the old tractor was sold.
Yes, we traded it in.
Okay.
So they took it as a trade in. And I believe if I'm remembering correctly, we got a two thousand dollar credit for his purchase of the new tractor.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Very good. Are we ready to move on to the revenue section?
So for the revenues. It's broken out generally by category between state, federal, local assessments, local sources of revenue. Proved in that way. In the first column, besides the description. It's what was approved through the MS twenty four in the fall. That we go through with the D R A. And then the next column is actual revenue we've received. So we don't encumber. Revenue. So when we receive it, it gets reported. And then the last column is what we've actually seen versus the budget. Now, we will receive. All the local assessment revenue in addition to the swept. I also found out from student services that. We will be receiving a check for about twenty one thousand additional Medicaid revenue. And that some of the transportation costs have not been. Requested through Medicaid yet. So we should still get more Medicaid revenue beyond the twenty one thousand I'm aware of. So that leaves us in a position where. We should have about four hundred eighty thousand plus an additional revenue above what we budgeted.
That's not in the. Budget numbers that you just showed us. Four hundred, four hundred K?
Excuse me?
Four hundred K additional revenue, is that projected in the?
Four hundred eighty, yes, because this one right here just has actual. So I'm giving you the four eighty is what I'm anticipating through the end of the year. Because we'll be getting right there. When you're looking at the revenue report I provided, it doesn't include. May's or June's town assessment revenue, just because we haven't received it yet.
So my question is, is. Year end, are we looking at one point three or one point seven?
One point, probably one point seven total, but. That would be on the high end. So it's probably going to be a little less because of some of the. Additional expenditures we haven't received. And that's with the board retaining the five percent of. The net assessment, which will equal one point one five seven million. So. I kind of jumped around a little bit, jumped ahead. So the board has the ability to retain up to five percent of the current year's net assessment. So that amount. Will equal one million, one hundred fifty seven thousand, seven hundred fifty seven dollars that the board can choose to retain. They usually vote on it in August. To retain for next year out of this year's budget, but you have to have it available in your fund balance. And because we're carrying over the one million from this year. Will have the one point one five seven million. Available for the board to retain and still have. Money to return to the taxpayers.
The question, is there anything? That we need, particularly the next year's budget? That we could move to this year's? I'm not asking for an answer right now tonight.
The answer, the answer is certainly yes. Not in the amounts that.
Well, I know it would.
You know, talked about, but there are some things that we should talk about.
There are things we should should take care of them while we have the ability to do so. Because who knows what's going to happen next year?
You think like the C T E architectural stuff falls in that category?
C T E architectural work, at least the beginning stages, right, anyway, would be something that we would want to utilize for certain. That would be smart. There are some facilities items that we could probably make sure that we button up.
I need a plow for the tractor. And you, Kerry, you said the Abbey Group's going to come next week or next meeting?
Well, I haven't asked them yet. I want them to come to present when the board, the night that the board ends up. Having the contract presented to them, I'm going to ask them to come. So I haven't asked them yet, and I'm still working with the state. You had. Mentioned earlier about asking me about a survey and Christine, I know you emailed me. I don't believe it was in the contract. I was going to actually review it in more detail because we have to use the state approved contract now. And when I submitted. The draft to the state because they have to review it first, they came back to me and their template has now changed again. They just sent me a new one today. So I actually have to look at it. So maybe can we discuss it during the finance committee meeting and I can let you know if it has any language in there, but we need to approve the state. Template for the food service management company contract. So if it doesn't have it in there, I don't think I can add it.
I remember that they were not. Thrilled with surveys and thought they had would come up with a different way. Of.
So then my question would be to, if it isn't, isn't in, we don't know that yet. If it isn't in there, then I would ask the administration. Are they intending to do anything? Along those lines? Because. If we're going to make a decision on a renewal of a contract, we certainly want to know whether the students think they're getting good food or not. Thank you, Kerry. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Help me with my ignorance. Please, I'm just. Probably something I shouldn't have to ask, but are Jeffrey and Ren's local assessments? The actual revenue is. You know, obviously quite a bit lower than the. The MS twenty four projection. Why is that?
Well, that's because we haven't received May's or June's yet. So the actual versus what I can have on the right hand side. So what's built to the towns includes swept and the local assessment. So. The swept is state aid and the local assessment obviously is local, so it's split between the two. So we just.
So the answer is that those months haven't been billed yet or they haven't been?
Well, they've been billed. We just haven't received it. They have to pay it by the tenth of the month. So we should.
I'll sign the check on the tenth, John. I'll sign the check on the tenth. Not one day before.
Such an obvious answer, but I had to ask.
Well, I think. So it's my understanding then.
It's.
Town. Yeah, the heading should probably say. Yeah, not six thirty twenty four, but whatever the date was where you drew that.
So my understanding is the town sends out the tax bills, the town collects the revenue for the tax bills. And then they use that revenue to pay the monthly. Bills to the school.
Right. And since we're only collecting like and we, we get, we have a lot in December when we collect, but right now we're like. Running out because the tax bills need to go out again in June. So.
And in the meantime, it sits there collecting interest.
Lots of interest this year. We're having a good time.
You're welcome. Lisa, you have a question, comment?
I've always wanted to ask this and since we're, since we're. Throwing things in there. I have something I want to spend money on. It is staff appreciation week, appreciation. Nearly, I think all of our schools got a new mascot or a new logo or a new. Up thing, I think. Didn't Jeffrey get a? Yeah, thing and then arranged it and we did. I am wondering if the board would approve. Assigning funds to swag for the staff, all staff, the sodiums, everybody. Something like a fleece, something now, not a mug, but something that they could wear. That not, not a lander, something they could wear that would. Show the pride, show a unity, show a, you know, here's who we are. That they could wear out and about, advertise us, say, this is, this is us. They're costly, you know, fleeces, jackets, those kind of things are costly. It's not something that I think all the schools are automatically saying, let's do this. I think a mug is a lot easier, but. I would like to see if we could designate some funds to do that.
I think we have a fund. For next fiscal year. I don't think we have some this year. So.
This would be a gift from the board as representatives of the town. I get that people budget and we allowed that this year, like we put that forward this year in policy saying schools can now budget. For gifts and for time and for, you know, for party, you know, things like that. We changed this so that.
Specific circumstances that they can use it for, correct. But. I think I would leave that to the administration. And I'll tell you why. I have a neighbor that comes over every time we spend money on stuff that doesn't have anything to do with education. All right. And. I would have difficulty supporting a broad-based. Expense like that for everyone, teachers, administrators. Just because we have the funding to do it. I would, you know, I absolutely appreciate the work our teachers do and our administration does. And I think that the one way that we show our appreciation is we try to provide them with adequate salary. We try to provide them with adequate benefits. And we try to provide them with some of the motivational things that we can. In terms of meetings and things like that. But beyond that, I'm not sure that as a trustee of my. Taxpayers money that I want to. Go to a broad-based. Program like that. That's just my two cents. I understand where you're coming from. I absolutely, I absolutely agree. We should do everything for our people that we can do. All right, but we have to, we have a balanced balancing act here. On one hand, we got it, we're trying to. On one hand, we got it, we're trying to support and motivate our staff, but on the other hand. You know, we've got people who are working hard to earn that money. And I've got to account to them for our judicious use of that money, so.
So I guess as far as proposals, that I think what I'm hearing from you, Ruben, is that there are a number of things that we'll propose to kind of move in. From next year to this year, fill this, and I think we'll have a, to me have a better understanding of it then. Yeah, totally. I agree with the sentiment, Lisa. And yeah, I think we neglected mentioning at the beginning of the meeting that it was, you know. Staff and nurse appreciation week, and I think there's a lot of, I've heard so far, there's a lot of great things going on that. You know, mostly. I think it's mostly parent-driven. I know there's a lot of staff involved, but a lot of great parents that are stepping up and. Showing that appreciation, but I'm sure there are things we could do. And that's a good idea. Any other comments on? That matter or? Revenue? Carrie, anything else? Or Ruben, anything else?
Just my last question, based on what the state sent back, we may not be able to put a. Survey or anything into the contract. Even if they agree to it.
Can they agree to it? Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, I mean.
Just to do it? I don't see why not. I wouldn't say it has to be in their contract. Unless there's a reason I I'm not aware of, but.
Okay.
There's. Just because it's not in the contract shouldn't mean that they can't do that.
I think the wellness group ought to take it under their wing.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Carrie. And we'll move on to the second session of pub- public comments. So I don't see anybody new in the, in the room, but we'll give people online a minute. To raise their hand, please, if you'd like to make a public comment during our second session. I guess. With another few seconds, but. The next item up, if we get nothing, and let us know if anybody raised their hand, usually by now they have. Are there any additional board matters to discuss? I don't have any this week.
Just a.
Yeah.
Point of clarification, we did have some conversation earlier about increasing AP and so forth, finding different ways to help support that. Or programs like that. And just wanted to let you know that there are some AP classes, for instance, like in the area of science. Or in the past, like some math-science combinations that we've, if we haven't had them, we've been able to. Make an arrangement with ConVal if they have them, for our learners to go over there and take those courses, so. We have started to do things of that nature, not necessarily a combination. We've just been utilizing what is out there already. Yeah, V-Lax would be a, while they offer AP courses there, when you're talking about sciences, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tougher.
I I wanted to ask about. Financial assistance for college-bound graduates. I know that there was a session that had to be canceled. Because of inclement weather. About three weeks ago, four weeks ago, there was session can schedule. And I was wondering whether those sessions are. Well-attended or not well-attended. I know that the decision was to not reschedule it, and I I don't know if people come to those sessions or not. I was wondering if maybe that was the reason. You know, for not rescheduling it, but. I've been, you know, I had some discussions recently about the challenge, especially for people who not had family members going. To college in the past. Just understanding the FAFSA program and and also, you know, it seems so intimidating. The cost of college. The complexity of taking out loans and how that can affect you. Future years, all that kind of thing, just seems like. Well, let's just, I I guess I'm not saying this as a complaint, but just asking. What's, what's your, you know, your assessment or the principal's assessment of what? The status of. That is.
Well, certainly if anyone is online right now, could speak to that a little bit better than I could. I would ask the board chair to. If they, if they would like to. And what I do know is I've gone to several of the meetings that the school counseling. Unit has put forth. Actually, we've had our largest crews this year, largest groups, largest sessions. Attendees that we've ever had here for parts of what you're talking about. I don't know if it was specifically. That wasn't specifically necessarily for the FAFSA, so I I don't know. But certainly early, you know, juniors and and seniors and so forth, planning for applying for colleges. Mostly, I think the ones that I had attended to were really geared more toward juniors, sophomores and juniors. But parents asking some good questions, I believe we might have recorded one or two of them. And also put them online so that people can view them. So I do think if we search for that on our YouTube site, that we'd have some of those that were recorded this year. I know that there was one this past week that was not well-attended.
It's like last Thursday, right?
Yeah, one or, yeah, this past Thursday. So, but I I don't, I couldn't answer that about the one that was canceled and why it was not. We'll go back in there. I don't, I don't.
It may be just my lack of knowledge of what is being done, so.
Sure.
John, I went to one of the financial aid sessions. Earlier in the school year, and I'd never been to one before, so I can't compare it to previous years, but I felt like. I actually believe the room was full. That with both students and learners. It was a great session. I learned a lot. It was even before the new FAFSA application was online. We had resources and information, contact information to call when we had questions. I called when I had problems. And was able to resolve some problems. So I felt like that one session that we had was extremely well-attended. It was informative and there was the ability for us to follow up. So I felt like it was a great program. It was, it was a new application. There were some complications with it, and I believe everything. Is resolved by now, but it is late. And even going on college tours, they're talking about, colleges are talking about. The financial aid still, information still trickling into them. Into the colleges. So it's a very different year for financial aid. I don't know how if that's going to impact people's, learners' abilities to attend college at all, but.
Because they're getting their award letters late, is that the?
But that being said, right, so.
Have been extending the deadlines.
Colleges have been extending deadlines. I just saw that the common scholarship grant. Application deadline was extended. So for instance, in our family's case, we had not received our financial aid information yet. When the original deadline appeared. So I appreciate that it was extended, I think to May tenth or something like that. So it's, it's, you know, we live in, in times when everything is, when many things seem unprecedented. And this is definitely the case. Hopefully it'll all be smooth running for next year's graduating class. But I do feel like this school, our guidance program department put on a great session. With lots of information and follow-up resources. They did the best they could.
Thank you for all that information. Really appreciate it.
And actually, John's question is really important for historical purposes, for those who haven't been on the board as long as others. This topic itself actually was one that was of high importance to the early communication committee that. Met, the first communication committee noted that our communication of this very information having to do with. After graduation, the options and how to help families plan for all that was something that was necessary. So I'm glad that, that, yeah, absolutely, our school counseling. Unit right now, and this was mentioned by me ask when they came here, is just doing an outstanding job. It's something that Heidi Graff, former board member, was very passionate about. In the stories of how parents in the community would help other parents in the community because they weren't giving the information, but they had already been through it with older children and so forth. That's not the conversation by and large anyway anymore. And that, if people understand that if they need something, that they can. Contact our counseling department and they're able to get the support that they need.
Great. Any other board matters to discuss? Not the the last item. Go ahead, Charlie.
I'll make a motion going in non-public.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Thank you, Lisa. Alright, so we're gonna go into non-public for the purpose of personnel.
Purpose of personnel.
Yep. So roll call vote, Charlie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris, aye?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Alright, bring on public debate week twenty.
Thank you for being here.
Carrie, Carrie, thank you so much.